All right.
Before you do anything, hold this back and then we'll be over.
All right, we'll start the meeting. Hi, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting, Monday, May 22. I'm Sabrina Dunlap. We have Stephen Whitley, Ken Trum, Thomas Napoma, and Jeff Donahoe is on the phone. So our first order of business will be I move that we let Jeff participate via phone.
Second.
All right, so now we have roll call votes, Stephen.
Yes.
From a yes.
Yes.
All right, Jeff, you're in. Lucky you. Okay, so we don't have Neil with us tonight. He is daughter's graduation from college, which is very exciting. So Cara has graciously stepped in to help run the meeting. So we're just, you know, doing the best we can here. We rely on Neil heavily. So I don't know if anyone has quite surprised Donna Dunlap.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Donna, or she's retiring. She's done a fantastic job. It's like, you know, during any prevails, whether it's daylight stripe or.
Yeah, yeah, she's been amazing. There was a nice piece about her in the Concord Monitor. So she will be missed. Anyone else? All right, so now we have administrative. First up is approval of the consent agenda.
Sure, I'll move. We approve the consent agenda of Monday, May 22.
Second.
All right, so roll call vote, Stephen.
Yes.
And yes.
Yes.
And Jeff. All right, next is approval of the public meeting minutes of the eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, second.
All right, Stephen.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Jeff, is that a yes on the minutes?
I'm sorry, it's waking up a little bit.
Okay, yeah, you're not super clear, but okay, we got the yes on that. All right, and now we have two non-public meeting minutes, of course, is May eighth, twenty twenty-three, session one. These are, these ones are sealed. Yes.
Yeah, I'll move session one and as mentioned, they're sealed.
Oh, second.
All right, Stephen.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Yes, Thomas.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Okay, and second, non-public meeting minutes for May eighth, twenty twenty-three, session two, these are not sealed.
So move.
Second.
All right, Stephen.
Yes.
Ken. Yes. Thomas.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
All right, beautiful. Now we have our first public appointment, which is listed as, I don't know if it's supposed to be Catlin or Caitlin, Caitlin Monroe from National Grid Project. So I don't know who we have here with us. If you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Appreciate it very much. Yeah, I'm not Caitlin, but Caitlin works on your team. My name is John Downey, representing National Grid and the Twin States Clean Energy Link. And the rest of the team here, introduce themselves.
My name is Orlando Martinez. I'm the project manager for the Twin States Energy Link project and we're all part of the same team. So I'll pass it over to Cory.
Of course, it's one of the environmental scientists and environmental consulting firm. And I'm Jess Farrell, the overhead transmission line engineer, signed to the.
Very grateful for your time tonight. We're excited to be here and present an overall briefing on the Twin States Clean Energy Link, which is a project that we announced back on May third. This is reminiscent of another national grid project from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which was then known as the Granite State Power Link. This is a new and reimagined concept that utilizes roadside burial where there is not existing corridor. So we're particularly excited to be here in Hopkinton tonight to talk about how this utilizes the existing New England power, AKA National Grid Transmission Corridor that runs through town and walk through some of the high level goals of the project and then some of the very local benefits and the overall impacts. Before I turn it over to Orlando, our project manager, we're very proud that this project utilizes the existing corridor with very little in the window to have visual changes. And north, north of here, from Monroe to Dalton and then up to the Canadian border through Vermont utilizes about seventy-five miles of roadside burial to eliminate visual changes. As has been a topic of discussion in transmission projects past. So with that, I would turn it over to Orlando Martinez, our project developer, project manager, to introduce the project.
Again, thank you for allowing us to be here today. We're happy to have this opportunity to have this exchange with Hopkinton. We're trying to do this with all the towns along our transmission line corridor. So this is a good opportunity for us. Thank you for allowing us to be here. One of the things that we're going to talk about today is not only the project itself and why it's being built, because I think that our goal is to try to bring more renewable, non-greenhouse gas emission emitting energy into New England area. So that's the reason why we're building this project. This particular slide that you see here shows really what how the energy from New England has changed, how it's been supplied over the last few years. It used to be that energy from New England was dominated by oil and by gas generated generation units, and that switched. Less units on coal, less units on oil, but more on gas. But still, gas is a, is a intermediate fuel, but it still is a, doesn't emit greenhouse gas. But what our goal is to try to, we know that as New England is evolving, more and more renewable energy is getting built. Massachusetts, for example, has thirty-seven hundred megawatts of wind generation that's being built off of the, up the coast of Martha's Vineyard. Connecticut has about eleven hundred megawatts that's being built offshore. Those wind resources are great to sort of make the grid more green. However, in order to be able to have that generation, you need to have something that will back it up in case there is no wind blowing at a certain time. So this is where we come in. This line is going to bring Canadian resources into New England. At a, right now, the capacity that we're looking at is twelve hundred megawatts. And if you think about twelve hundred megawatts, that's enough to supply one point two million homes or so to give you the, the idea of how much power that is. So basically, when wind is generating, no problem, but as the wind dies down, then we need to somehow counteract, make sure that everybody's lights stay on. And this is what this, this line is for. And as you could see here, this particular slide kind of shows you that particular dynamic. In New England, we, we have a peak needed the summer and the winter. But then we also, but we also have surpluses in the spring and the fall, and sometimes the daytime depending when it is. So one of the things that this line brings is it's bidirectional. So we can bring Canadian renewable energy in when we need it, and then we can ship some of ours if we have access and can sell into Quebec and if they need it. This past winter, when we had a really cold spell in New England, we were able to do that in a very little time to sell power to Canada because they needed the power. So it can, it, it's really looking at energy needs in a regional, on a regional basis. It really helps to help each other out where we have strengths in different times of the day. Here, as you could see in this particular slide, it talks about that Quebec has large amounts of clean hydropower. They've had them for a long time, but they're also doing other things in, in, in Canada. They're also doing additional wind and just, just as New England is trying to maintain a greener grid, they're also doing the same, same thing. So this slide just kind of gives you an idea of what we just talked about, the bidirectionality of the line, us being able to sell to them when we have access, them selling to us when they have access. The reason that we're here and we're meeting with all these towns is because the Department of Energy had an RFP or Request for Proposals to build new transmission lines. And they said, we want to promote the construction of new transmission lines. So we're willing to fund those transmission line projects, all of the development, the development phase, because that's really when you have a lot of costs being spent to ascertain the viability of the projects. So they said, we will, we will fund this project up to fifty percent of the capacity. And so we said, okay, we can, maybe we have a proposal for you. We submitted a proposal back in February first. That was what we called Phase One. We sent in a proposal. At the end of it, they let us know that we had made it past Phase One, and we're now in Phase Two. And it is our understanding that fourteen projects submitted proposals in February, and of those fourteen, eight got selected. So we were one of the eight fortunate ones. However, it is a competitive project, a process. So we are competing against other projects to bring some of this DOE funding into the, into the region. We don't know where those other projects are from, but it's, it's a nationwide RFP. It's not just for New England. So the reason that we're here is because of this DOE process that we want to participate in. And the good news is that we have made it past to Phase Two. And right now, we're looking at, as part of Phase Two, we have to provide the more information and we have to do it by the fifth of July. So I think they want us to work over the fourth of July. So I think that that's, it was done a little bit sneakily. But really, that's when our target is, is July fifth for, to supply that next submittal to them.
And if I could just add, the TFP program, the Transmission Facilitator Program, is part of the IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment Job Center. So just administered by the US Department of.
Right, and so what, what are, what are we in? What, what are we trying to do here? Why are we any different from any other project? One of the key things about our project was that we really wanted to, one, have as minimal impacts as possible on the environment. And, and two, we wanted to see, because of that, we thought, well, let's see how we can use our existing infrastructure to be able to do that. So we're going to be constructing a new transmission line from the Canadian-US Canadian, Canada border. It's going to be an underground line that will take us to Monroe, New Hampshire. And from New Monroe, New Hampshire, we would go from an underground system to an overhead system, utilizing our existing overhead lines, reconducted those, maybe changing the wire to a lot greater capacity to flow through it, and bring that power all the way down to London Dairy, New Hampshire. As you can see here, this map that is being shown, the, the one on the left shows the underground part, and we're really looking to be right along the Connecticut River. And the reason why that is, is that there's a road there. It's relatively flat, which is much better for building an underground line. So from a technical perspective, it's a good place to put it. We don't have to deal with rough terrain that we would if we were building it somewhere inland. So that was one of the key things. And then we're crossing from Vermont into New Hampshire around the Dalton-Neunenberg area. We haven't picked an exact location yet, but that's what we're looking at crossing. And the reason we're crossing there is that, one, it's one of the narrowest points between the two roads, Route one oh two, two in Vermont, and Route one thirty-five in New Hampshire. Additionally, what that area provides is that there are farms on both sides of the river. So we wouldn't have to do any tree clearing to be able to cross. So that was one of the reasons we chose that area, is to cross in an area where we wouldn't have to cut down any additional trees. Then, once we cross into New Hampshire, we follow one thirty-five, basically to one of our existing substations, call them Monroe Substation there, that sits on Dam Road in Monroe. So now we're coming in underground there, and we're going to have a, what we call a converter station. So the line that comes from Canada is what we call a HADC, which stands for High Voltage Direct Current. When you're transporting power over long distances, it's the best way to, to, to do that so that you don't lose, you don't have any losses along the line, along that, that trajectory. So what we're doing is, in New Hampshire, we're installing that converter station to take it from a direct current system to an alternating current system. What we have in our homes is all alternating current. We don't have certain things that we could use, like computers and things like that, use direct current, so therefore you have some adapters. But for the most part, we use alternating current. So once we convert, we go from a direct current system to an alternating current system. It's going to go above ground. And we have existing towers there from Monroe all the way down to the London Dairy area. Currently, those lines carry what we, two hundred and thirty kilovolts of power. What we hope to do is to change the wire on those to allow them to have greater capacity and basically change the voltage from two thirty KV to three forty-five. That increase in voltage will allow us to put greater power through and allow this additional power that we're bringing in from Canada to come into the London Dairy area. One of the things I really like about this proposal, if I can build up here.
I really liked this part. It's sort of my favorite part. Well, not really.
Here in London Dairy, London Dairy is really poised as a, as a, as a transportation of energy hub. You have three forty-five KV lines going east to west and north to south, once we are installed. So basically, from London Dairy, we'll be able to inject twelve hundred megawatts there, but it can go south to Massachusetts. It can go west to Vernon, Vermont, for a three forty-five KV line. It can go east towards the Seabrook area. There's a huge substation called Scobie, Scobie Pond Road, Scobie Pond Substation that's home by Everest. It's huge, and it helps to distribute power even further north in New Hampshire and Maine. So we're excited about that because this project is not for Massachusetts. It really is for the entire New England grid because it is able to provide access to all these different markets. We understand that, of course, Massachusetts has a big load in Boston. But the good news is that this energy will be available to the entire New England grid. So that's why Land London Dairy was chosen, because it is a key transportation hub for, for energy.
Now, and talk about benefits to post community. And you want to talk about that one a little bit better because you know those better than I do. Sure. So there's, there are a lot of different components of the project that will lend themselves towards community benefits, overall economic impact, jobs, and some ancillary benefits like in the North Country, which I'll cover. First of all, let's talk about post-community benefits. The property tax increase that, that we'll talk about on a later slide, since National Grid, AKA New England Power, already pays taxes to the town of Hopkinton of the assets that run on the corridor. But we're putting together a community benefits package that totals into hundreds of millions of dollars for rural communities. And there are kind of multiple buckets of this. One, I should note, our partner on this is nonprofit Citizens Energy Corporation, which is Joe Kennedy the second, and now Joe Kennedy the third is involved. It used to be Joe for Oil, and now they, they run a lot of different programs like Joe for Solar. And essentially, what, what the nonprofit does is they invest in renewable energy projects all over the country, and then they utilize the profits and the proceeds off of the lines to reinvest in community-based energy programs to support low-income, energy-needs, weatherization, municipal solar, wide-ranging projects to go, to kind of give back to the communities that, you know, that host these energy facilities. The citizens' piece is, they're going to reinvest about fifty percent of their proceeds from the line, totaling about a hundred million dollars in the rural communities, in New Hampshire and Vermont, to support these kinds of endeavors. So part of the reason we're here tonight is we want to start a conversation about what might that look like in Hopkinton. You know, what is the town looking to accomplish? Are there energy needs? Are there fitness, weatherization, panel upgrades, heat pumps? You know, solar needs. I think the more we're having a conversation with you all and other stakeholders in town about ideas, you know, things that the town has kind of had in a long-term plan that we might be able to work towards together, the better off hopefully we'll all be. And then in addition to that, in, in additions to the citizens' energy benefits, there's additional community benefits packages that we're, again, assembling right now and trying to understand what other community-based project needs are. So between the two, you know, we don't have a firm number yet, but we are talking about hundreds of millions of dollars for, again, rural communities, which Hopkinton is one. And, you know, I'll say, we've been on the road giving presentations like this and talking with elected nonprofit and, you know, other, other organizations about ideas and, you know, we've been introduced to a lot of new people that, you know, who want to be part of this conversation and give us ideas. You know, a town last week suggested, you know, a small river judging project, you know, things that we would never know about until, you know, we get there and start having this conversation. So we're really excited to dive in on that, and this is a key part of the DOE application that we're working through right now up until our July fifth deadline. Regional Economic Development, as part of this, we're pursuing partnerships with regional economic development agencies. One of our key partners on this is the Northeastern Vermont Development Association, which specializes in economic development opportunities in the Northeast Kingdom. And we're certainly interested in talking about other partners in New Hampshire that might play a role. John Creation, we've partnered with IBW. We sat down with them as soon as this concept kind of came to fruition and formed an MOU with this specific focus on locals in New Hampshire and Vermont. And they've been outstanding partners to make sure that, A, it's, you know, it's built by union labor here in New Hampshire and in Vermont. The energy costs, you know, Orlando touched on this being a regional energy project. We will have more concrete numbers once, once an independent study is finalized, probably in the next couple of days, and we will get this information to you. But we are projecting billions of dollars in energy savings across the region over twelve years. It's, it's pretty significant. And, you know, we can, we're even better equipped to answer some of those questions as to how, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a combination of low-cost hydro and the phasing out of fossil fuel generation.
And now. Sure. Typically, what happens right now, how, how our energy is supplied, is that ISO New England is basically an entity that controls the power, and that's their job to keep the lights. And what they do is, they, what, where they, where they run an economic dispatch model. So what happens is, you have all these generators and all these suppliers of energy saying, hey, I can supply you at this price. They have an auction basically every day. And what they do is, the lowest cost units are what gets dispatched. So typically, what gets dispatched first are like the nuclear power plants. For example, Seabrook is running all the time. Then you have, right now, in New England, we'd look at the first line, is that most of it comes from natural gas. So you have the most efficient natural gas plants that are cheapest run next. Then after that, you have to go to less efficient units that are available, such as, you know, older, older natural gas that's been out there, and even to a certain extent, there's still some oil plants that are remaining in the area. So those get dispatched last. So what our goal is to try to displace some of those. And because the power that we're bringing in is, is hydroelectric mostly, that comes at a lower price. So that's going to have downward pressure on the market because it is a market. It's, it runs at that auction runs every day. So that's how ultimately we brought, we, we believe we will be able to bring savings because of the downward force of prices.
I know we're probably going long. I'll touch on this, local renewables. By completing the upgrades to Cumberland, we are eliminating a major hurdle for some local renewable development on the Coas Loop, which is a kind of circular, crescent-shaped transmission line that circles most of Coas County. Because essentially, the, the cost to develop the upgrades, you know, from the rough south is so prohibitive for some of those renewable developers. This project will take care of those costs and then therefore limit the scope by which they have to create other system upgrades to get on time. And we've already started conversations with some folks that are interested in this type of cost. And we're excited about what that could be in terms of economic development for the country. And the stakeholder collaboration, you know, I've, I've worked on behalf of National Grid for projects for almost a decade. And, you know, what we, what I could say is the company has an uncommon commitment to stakeholder collaboration and communication, not just in the application and in the permitting phase, but infrastructure. You know, the more we're talking, knocking on doors and establishing relationship with you and your constituents, the better off we are. From the day we, from today until the day, you know, they flip the switch and energize them. And we really want to make sure that we're having an ongoing discussion about some of these economic benefits and understanding, you know, what would be most beneficial to the town. Cover this a little bit. And then the, the other thing, the, while the, the additional studies are ongoing, there, it, it shouldn't yet be forgotten that greenhouse gas emissions from New England light options would be upwards of four million metric tons per year. So it's a pretty significant saving. In Hopkinton, the estimated annual property tax increase after construction is about three hundred thousand dollars based on current design, time, lining cost. All of this project will take place within the existing New England Power Corridor. Row stands for right-of-way there. And, and to be clear, just to put a finer point on it, the three hundred thousand dollars and then that increase over what New England Power currently pays in the tab. So this would not be placing with the additive. And then the total mileage is about five point four miles. There's a map that you'll know more than I do. That's the, the line on the right-hand side of the screen there shows where the corridor runs through town for those five point four miles. This is a cross-section of the existing corridor. And if I could, I might ask Jess Farrell to come up and give you a formal expert summary of where you can have the.
So the two circuits that we're proposing to upgrade are the two shorter ones on the outside, right-of-way. The existing H two O one and B two O two lines. As Orlando mentioned, they're currently energized at two thirty KV. In order to energize them at three forty-five KV, what we'd be doing is replacing the existing conductor, which is a single wire, replacing it with two smaller conductors that are high-temperature, low saggs. Basically, they're a special aluminum that you can heat up and it doesn't sag a lot, and re-insulating. So replacing the insulators that are up there, tough and glass ones, and the shield wire itself. So that's how we would achieve that voltage upgrade. In certain instances, we would need to increase the heights of the structures. There's two ways that you would go about doing that. The first is by installing tower extensions. So the way that these towers were designed, they have five and fifteen-foot extensions that you bolt on the bottom. So there's two triangular pieces where basically you take the body of the tower, you lift it up, pop the two triangles on, it goes up either five or fifteen. That's our first method. Our second method would be to replace the existing structure with a galvanized steel pole H-frame structure. Same width as the existing towers, so that way we wouldn't need to expand the right-of-way at all. We'd keep the conductor traveling along the same one. And we're looking at about thirty percent of the structures on the, the total length of the project would require either height extensions or replacement. And generally speaking, we would always be, kind of, the structure heights would generally be below the height of the DC structures that are in the center of the corridor there. So you're not looking at an overall need increase in the corridor itself.
The hundred and ten-foot line in the middle, the four fifty KV, remains untouched through the process and will be the tallest structure on the right-of-way in the instances where there are, there is need to increase there. How long does it take you to retrofit one of the towers?
So if we're doing tower extensions, that's usually a one crew, about a day, under energized conditions. So what they do is they build out the extensions themselves, fully assembled, take the line out of service so that it energizes for safe working conditions. They use cranes to lift up the body of the tower. Then they put the two tower pieces in, kind of bolt them at the attachment points and at the foundations. They're good to go.
I put a new basement on here. What's the, if you get approval from the feds, what's your timing on when the project would be completed?
Orlando, you might be better suited to talk about permitting supply. Well, permitting time has to be.
There's extensive permitting that's required for this project, as I understand. In addition to the DOE being possibly the kind of partner in the project and funding it, they also, we're also required to get a permit from them because of the international border crossing requires a presidential permit. So we're going to have to go through that process, which initiates NEPO review, which I'm sure that you're all familiar with and takes quite a bit of time.
So we're going to have to go through that process, which initiates NEPA review, which I'm sure that you're all familiar with and takes quite a bit of time. There is some new guidance from the federal government streamlined this process and it is specifically directed at the DOE. So hopefully that will benefit us in this project. And then, you know, the other federal permits included, so Army of Engineers, EPA, down to our state permits. So we are hoping to initiate, we're in the process of doing all of our environmental data collection and field work this summer. Hopefully we'll finish that in one season. It's a lot to do, obviously. It's two hundred and eleven miles. We have several crews out on, on the right of way right now, working hard. So we're looking to file by early next year and hoping for permits in hand by mid to late twenty twenty six to be in construction by twenty twenty seven.
In service twenty thirty-ish. And we hope to start construction really towards the latter part of twenty twenty six. We have some work to do at our existing Monroe, New Hampshire substation. Now that we're going to basically start the process for construction.
And you would have to get some kind of approval from the state?
Right. We have to go through the New Hampshire Site Evaluation Committee and the same, like a version of that in Vermont as well. And, you know, all of the state level permits kind of get, and town level permits can get rolled up into that process. So the town should be notified when we file that petition and then you'll have an opportunity to participate in that process, provide input, read all of the public documents and let us know what you think of them. So that, and that is an extensive process as well.
And in this slide, you mentioned strong support from New Hampshire, but you were silent on Vermont. Is that because there's opposition there?
Hearing this presentation.
Honestly, yeah, it's because it's a New Hampshire presentation. We, we, we're lining up support in Vermont as well.
And beside giving us information, is there anything you're looking for from Hopkinton at this point?
You know, I think, I think the most important thing is to start the conversation. I think there's a couple of things that we have core already in jest here. Because I think the more we understand about the right of way, you know, your community far better than we ever will. Or understand about, you know, areas exactly. Need, you know, good example, we've met with virtually every environmental assignment, conservation group in the state of New Hampshire. And, you know, it's not uncommon for someone who wants to share mapping or local intel with us about something to be aware of. Or he's doing extensive work with the indigenous groups about artifact recovery through the roadside burial. The more we're collaborating on this process, I think the better off we're going to be because that's the approach we're going to take with this project. So I'd say, understanding what you think we need to know would be number one. While we keep talking about how the, the Community Benefits Program can help the town and what some of your goals might be in these areas. And, you know, number three, just, you know, introductions of folks you think we ought to be talking to. And, you know, this is a competitive process. And we are, you know, looking to build letters of support. So if this is something the town feels, you know, that, that you would eventually support, we'd be interested in talking about how that letter or your statement of support could help our application with the DOE. I would not have mentioned that proactively unless you asked.
No, no, that's, that's fine. And, and you mentioned in the other benefits, let's say, that the town would get. See, our town energy committee were talking about solar rays at different town facilities. Is that the kind of thing that might get funded?
Yes. Yeah, that's the short answer. You know, I think the more that we can find out about it and how we might be able to make those, those programs work together, I think the better off we'll be.
And if you don't get DOE funding, is this project going to potentially go forward anyway?
Orlando, do you want to ask another question?
So our plan is right now to focus in on that. I think that we see that the value of this project and we're, we're getting signals from ISO New England and from other sources that the region needs this kind of transmission. So our plan is to move forward, but maybe not at the same pace as we would do it with the DOE because the DOE is supplying quite a bit of, of, of support in terms of getting the development cost done. So our plan is to yes, move forward, but probably not at the same pace that we would do it if we were to get this.
Is the Canadian clean energy, is that all hydro Quebec? Is it all coming through hydro? There's none.
Well, there's various entities that would be potential customers on.
But it's all, it's generally hydro power.
It's generally hydro. Like there are other entities and I think they're building additional wind resources as well in Canada. So that we might be able to tap into other things other than, than hydro. But I think from the percentage wise, we're looking at predominant hydro.
Are you already building for the twelve hundred megawatts or is that going to happen? Or not you, but the, whoever's generating the power, is that going to happen regardless of whether the, you get the funding from DOE or?
You, you're talking about the Canadian part?
Yeah, yeah, the generation in Canada.
That part is, is, is done separately and in those entities that we're not right now working with anybody in particular on the Canadian side. We're looking at various customers there. They're Hydro Quebec, of course, is one of those customers. But there are other people that also have renewable resources up there that we could also probably partner with. So but right now we are looking for that. And part of the DOE funding that we're getting is going to help us do those kinds of things.
Okay. What, what's the remainder of the TFP process? You said you guys are in phase two right now? What, what's left of that?
So phase two involves supplying a lot of additional information to DOE and we're in the process of compiling that. So we got to do on July the fifth. After that, they will evaluate us. And if they're going to come, it's a competitive process. So they'll, they'll compare us to other projects and see which ones are the most viable. Which ones really, I think one of the key criteria for them is which one of these will allow us to exit the project as early as possible because they want to help, but they don't want to be long-term investors. So that's one of the criteria that we are. So we're going to, once, if we get selected at the end of this phase two, then we'll have a contract with DOE. I believe they're looking to select two to four projects is what our understanding is. So right now we're competing against, we're eight of us that are in the, in this round. So maybe two or four will be selected. So if we're one of the, the lucky, the fortunate ones out of that, then we'll negotiate a contract with them. And then we will continue on the same process every year.
Okay. I, is there another winnowing from eight or is the next, they're, they're going to award at the next step? Is that?
That's our understanding. Our understanding is that after this, there's no other phase. After phase two, this is, this is it.
Okay, okay.
I had read somewhere recently that in Canada, they're starting to block it sending power to New England that they're stressing their own systems. Is, is, is that correct?
Well, we, we read that article as well and it came out in Bloomberg that, you know, that, that they were running out of that, of, of power. We, several days later, Hydro Quebec responded to that and saying that they had insufficient resources. And what they are looking to do, they are, and, and I'm, I'm just speaking to you about publicly available information. Today, for example, they made a presentation, I believe it was at ISO New England, where Hydro Quebec said, look, we need to change the market so that we can be able to provide you this balancing resources for wind on a five-minute basis rather than a fifteen or ten or fifteen minute basis. So they're looking at continually to supply us with this balancing power. So I think that they view us as a good market for, for, for their energy. We need them in the sense that we need some screening of our, our electric grid. But we also would like to be good partners and also be able to supply them when they need it. So from, from those market, that market information, we are including that, yes, we are, this is still viable. And to Hydro Quebec, from their part, is interested in being, in being a supplier of this energy to the US. So I think that we're still doing a lot of studies and we're going to continue to do these studies as we move through the process that we're selected with DOE. Because we do need to have more of a, a relationship with whoever's going to be our supplier. But from the, from what we know today, this is still a viable project based on what supplies they have. In, in Canada.
Are, are you facing any opposition in New England other than from maybe owners of existing power plants?
I personally don't know of any. This is the third time I've gotten this question in the last two days. I, I, I checked myself before I answered the first time. You know, we've been out since May third. I mean, I haven't encountered a, a project. And I, I think that's because it is, you know, minimally invasive with, you know, minimal change. You know, Orlando said we're going to renew the vast majority of the towers that are out there. Some will be replaced due to condition, some will be replaced due to appearance. But more or less, the non-engineer would say, what you see out there today is what you're going to see out there when we're done. So I think as a result of that, you know, the, the bidirectional benefits of wanting to tend to, you know, I would say capture imagination in terms of what it does for offshore and onshore renewables to export. So, you know, that's the other piece that I would say too, I would encourage it goes not to look at this line purely as, you know, importing the Canadian hydro or Canadian renewables, but a balancing line, a battery for the region whereby we can ship our renewables up there after surplus.
Do, do you need more generation of renewables here in New England to, to be a source for the project to work for you guys financially?
I think that the way that we're looking at it currently is just be able to supply balancing resources for New England. And we're still doing the studies to see what it looks like for the other side. So that, but that, that, that question still remains. But right now, our, our primary focus is to be able to really provide that balancing for all of this offshore wind that's coming, becoming online in the next, the next few years.
You good?
Yes. Good.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Very informative.
The, the last slide, our website's twin states cleanenergylike.com, email address, hotline phone number. Actually, it raised my cell phone. So, you know, give it out freely. But we're, we're appreciative of the time and, and we'll be back.
Sounds good. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
And now we have to make sure. Unless you want to hook the rest of our meeting.
I'm sure they want to stay.
Oh, I get away, I hit this button. There we go. You are about to be. Excellent.
All right. Do you have a question for us or for them? I guess if, if it's like a quick question.
I, I just wondered if this is, how this is funded and will come from the right.
No, this is not a, any, it's not a base project. So the funding won't, the revenue, the rent payers. Ultimately, the way the market works, the generation when you're built, there's a generation piece and then the, the transmission piece. The generation piece is where you'll see whatever impact you have by bringing in this power from Canada is, that's where it's going to be. Because those contractors will be aware, you'll, you'll, you'll see the benefits in that, in that part. We are, right now, we're looking for funding to the DOE, providing with it. We will provide funding. We also have, we have partners that will help us fund this. But it's not, it's not rate based. It's not at all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Sorry, we're overtime Waste Reduction Committee. But we, you're next on our public appointments list. And actually, I guess I should move this.
It's fine.
This is not going to stretch very far. I think that should pick you up hopefully.
Let's see. So I have my PowerPoint with our flash drive.
Great. Amazing. That is the best possible.
Biggest concern would be on Sierra.
Well, she, this should pick up, I think. That is it. So it doesn't seem to stretch any further. But I think you're good. We're pretty close to the theme. I think you're okay. I don't know if there's, if we can see who's on there. I don't even know if we have people online, but I think we're okay with that.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for putting us on the agenda. I'm presenting, but I'm speaking for the Waste Reduction Committee. And Thomas, thanks for all the work that you've done so far. I hope this helps in some way to further the conversations. So we were asked a while ago to take a fresh look at the Pay by Bag, Bring Bags program. So this is our fresh look. It's taken us a while, but this is where we're at. And, and I have four things to show you. One, the first is the slide presentation. And the purpose of this is to to put the discussion of pay by bag into the larger context of waste management. So you can see how it relates and why it's important. The second thing I want to talk about is the document that I hope you all got twelve years out. It's basically the review. I think I sent that last night with some recommendations and I tried to highlight things that I thought were some of the important things to start with. The third thing is I just want to show you a couple of design projects, some stickers for residency. And it sounds like you weren't able to open those files.
I couldn't, but.
So I can show you on my laptop. So, and then the last thing is to talk a little bit about Brian Patno's report in our. Okay. So I practiced this at the Waste Reduction Committee and I got coached by Abigail Stone. She's our high school senior. How to do a good job with the PowerPoint presentation. Never read what's on the slides. So anyway, okay, so solid waste management in small New Hampshire towns. Basically, we're looking for efficiency effectiveness in environmental protection. So because our waste management really affects land, air and water, I wanted to do a land acknowledgement, which was written by the Indigenous New Hampshire Collaborative Collective. This gathering takes place on Indocana, which is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Abnaki, Henneke and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land and waterways and the El Nobot, which means people who have stewarded Indocana throughout the generations. That's a picture of the stream that runs behind my house, comes down from Crossroad Beaver Pond and those. That's a picture of the stream that runs behind my house, comes down from Crossroad Beaver Pond and those eventually. Thanks. Oh, yeah, I guess somebody else said it. Sorry. Do I need to tell you for next slide, next slide?
Yeah, I'll try my best to guess. It's I don't mind. I don't mind.
Okay. All right. So now we'll go to the next slide. Nope. Nope. Yes. That's it. Okay. So as I mentioned, I wanted to put this pay by bag issue in in context. And there are four things to think about. First, that New Hampshire has a growing waste problem, and every town is part of it. That means us. And you know a little bit about our growing waste problem from Brian's report and how we compare to other towns, which is not really favorably. So as the waste grows, we have all kinds of impacts in managing it, property taxes increasing and so forth. And from the waste, solid waste working group on the state level, they say that these impacts really require immediate attention. And first, from the state at the state level, and then secondly, at the local level. So we're working in partnership. And the local level at red red box up there is where pay by bag fits in. And then the last thing I'll mention at the very end is that waste is a behavior before it becomes a commodity. Next slide. Yes. Oh, very good. I could just give you a listen. So really, waste is a cultural phenomenon. So when you say, well, what is waste? I mean, there are legal definitions. There are all kinds of definitions, but you know, it's something that we throw away, we think isn't valuable, we used it up. It's a waste product from another process. But something that we think is waste may very well be of high value to another culture that doesn't have the resources that we do or the ability to cheaply and easily replace things. So it really is a cultural phenomenon, and that's important. Excellent. And managing waste is as old as civilization. I'm not going to read all these boxes, but you can go back as far as 3,000 B.C., when the first reported landfill was in Moses Greece, and then fast forward to 500 B.C., Athens had the first waste regulation that we know of. They required trash to be carried at least a mile outside of the city to preserve its beauty and protect public health. Then fast forward again to the new world, and you see Ben Franklin in 1757 urged people to, please don't throw your garbage in the streets, dig holes in your backyard and bury it. And he started his Clean Streets campaign and the Street Cleaning Service. And we had the first incinerator on Governor's Island in New York Harbor. That was sort of the beginnings. And then we'll just fast forward to 2023. Now here we are with less than 5% of the world's population and more than 12% of garbage production. Next. So how about New Hampshire? How have we managed our waste here? Well, if you look back in in Dakena, the homeland of the ancestral people here, you'll see that, you know, most of what they used for materials were from the earth, bone, wood, animal skins, stone, stone. And so most of I just looked at that picture and half of the Abnaki houses, tables. Anyway. Anyway, anything that they were finished with and and they used up would really go back to the earth. And then the Europeans arrived with all their European habits. And where did Europeans put their waste? Well, how many of us have found a cellar hole and we find a spot where there's broken glass and chips of china? And we're pretty sure that that was probably where the kitchen window was and it was a something breaks, toss it out. Or you're in the woods and you come across an abandoned farm and you find rusty buckets and tractor parts and stuff just abandoned. And then in the rivers, we always had rivers to dump into. And you know Lee Wilder, longtime chair of the Conservation Commission, who told me that when his father was a boy, he worked in the A and P supermarket, which is where Witching Hour provisions is now. And what they used to do there was all the the trash and the meat cuttings and everything. They had a cart behind the building and throw it on the cart and cart was full. They trundled it across the street and dumped it in the Duke River. So, you know, and Jenny Haynes told me when she was growing up here as a child, her father forbade them from even putting the big toe in the river. So we have made progress. But that those were some of the habits, and ocean dumping, of course. Next slide. So we really went from literally throwing our waste in the backyards to having town dumps, you know, sort of centralizing our waste. And I remember as a child, we had a metal garbage can. I don't think we used any kind of liner. We just put the trash in it raw. And then on Saturday, we put in the back the station wagon and take it to the dump. And the dump was always on fire, was always smoldering or burning. Because it was burning, it didn't have anything over it. So all the rain and the snow would melt and trickle down through it, carrying anything in that dump down into the groundwater. So I don't know when, but at some point, I think maybe with the Clean Water Act and Clean Air Act, this the federal government and the state said time to stop. So we had to cap all the, we had all unlined landfills, and the last one was was capped in New Hampshire in 2012. So then we went to transfer stations to even bigger dumps and bigger burning piles. So and our transfer station started 1990. Next one, Thomas. So what's in our MSW, which stands for municipal solid waste? That's what comes into our transfer station. I'm not talking about C and D. It's just the, you know, household trashings. And this is a chart from the EPA, and it's from 2018. So there may be something a little more recent, but this is as close as I could come. And it shows you just nationally what's the averages that you would find in municipal solid waste. And, you know, going around the chart there, you have you see that so much of it is recyclable in some way, paper, glass, metals, plastics, somewhat. Yard trimmings, food waste, wood, rubber. Most of that, I I think I calculated something in the 90 90% could be recycled in some way and kept out of landfill. And the food waste is a big one. It's almost a quarter. And Sabrina, I remember you mentioned it when you started composting with your works on, you couldn't believe how heavy that bucket was. That that says it all right there. Uh, next one. So how do we manage this MSW? Well, 1990, the state established a waste management hierarchy. And you see at the top, the most preferred methods of managing waste, and then at the bottom, the least preferred. And source reduction is considered the best way to go about things. Don't produce the trash in the first place. And the worst thing we can do is incinerate it and landfill it. Next slide. But what have we been doing for 32 years since the hierarchy was established? We've been landfilling and incinerating. We've had pretty much no source reduction. We have had some recycling and reuse, starting to do more composting. But we've really been at the bottom of the pyramid for all this time. And so what what does this mean? Next, next chart. What does this mean? What's the impact of this waste? Well, a lot of different things. I'm not going to read them all, but you know, the landfills are filling up, property taxes go up because tipping fees go up, carbon emissions, methane. My daughter lives in Wyoming. And I'm just trying to give anecdotes to make this a human talk, but I I called her last week and I said, what are you doing this weekend? She said, well, we have a big camping trip planned with some friends, but it's really smoky here because there are these big fires in Alberta and a few other places in Canada, and she's in Wyoming. It's really smoky down here. And when my granddaughter is five months old, she said, I I don't think Ila's tiny little lungs should be breathing this. So they ended up canceling the camping trip. And she said, you know, Mom, if this keeps going, can I come and stay with you for a month or so? I said, sure. And after I talked to her, I thought, you know, what we're doing, creating methane and carbon emissions and all this stuff that relates to climate change, we're part of the driver of the fires that are driving my daughter home to New Hampshire. I mean, we're all in this together. So it's a pretty big thing. Next one. So what can small towns do about it? Well, if if you're not a waste nerd like me, this might not interest you, but I think that this, the New Hampshire came out last year, the 2022 New Hampshire Solid Waste Management Plan. I think it's a pretty interesting meeting if you want to know more about our waste situation. But New Hampshire wrote that plan, D E S wrote it, and it has eight overarching themes and eight goals. Next slide. And I'm not going to go through all the themes and the goals because the question is, well, where do we start as a town? Next one, Thomas. The best thing that towns can do is to create a solid waste management plan on the municipal level and use the first three goals of the state plan, which are reduce quantity of solid waste, reduce the toxicity of solid waste, and minimize, I'm sorry, maximize the diversion of solid waste. And the two ways to do that are recycling and composting. So who would create such a plan? Well, this is a whole nother discussion, but one proposal we have is to to finally put out of its misery the refuse disposal committee and create a new committee called the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and one of their first assignments would be to write a plan. So that's to be developed. So just looking quickly at the three goals, the first goal, reducing the quantity of solid waste, the state has set a goal of 25% reduction by 2030 and 45% by 2050. So each of us, I mean, what is the state? The state is made up of towns. So each town needs to think, how can we reduce by 25% and 45% by those target dates? And for each goal, I've had, I put in a what, a how, and a who. But basically, that's where your source reduction comes in. How it's done is largely through education and getting consumers to to not buy so much packaging and stuff that they don't really need. And then, of course, unit-based pricing, which is pay as you throw, is big there. That's that's in goal one. And who would do it? Well, it would be all of us together, the select board, the waste committee, the transfer station. Next one. Goal two is to reduce the toxicity of our solid waste stream, and that's basically talking about household hazardous waste. And a lot of that is consumer education about where the dangers lie, and especially PFAS, which is something that's new to a lot of us, and we all have a lot to learn. We don't know how to manage it yet. But that, again, is an integration issue. Next one, Thomas. And the last goal that I think we can focus on in the town level is to maximize the diversion of waste from, we send ours to the Rochester landfill. And this is from, we do this with enhanced recycling, and we would also do it with townwide composting, not even talk about composting, but this again is where a unit-based pricing pays you through pay by bag, whatever you want to call it, fits into the diversion. Goal three. And then who would do it? It would be really all of us together. Last slide. So I just want to bring us full circle back to the Indocana and our ancestral people here. Waste is a behavior before it becomes a commodity. Friend of mine said that, and it really struck me. But efficient, effective, and environmentally sound solid waste management requires rethinking how relationships how and why we create it, the impacts of how we manage it, and how we can minimize those impacts going forward. So continuing existing practices means continuing the associated harms to public health and environmental integrity. What can we learn from the El Nobot of the Indocana? We can learn cultural recognition of the connection between the people, the land, the air, the water, the flora, and the fauna. We can't live without any of those things. And we have to develop waste management, management practices that respect and protect them to create hope for the survival of all forms of life in the future. So that's the end of that presentation. That's our contup. Any questions about that? So move on. 12 years out. Did, I don't know if you had a chance to read through this, Sabrina, you saw it a long time ago, and I don't know if the rest of you did, but we came up with what is it, 10 consolidated 10 recommendations for what we can do related to the pay by bag program? And it really centers around a goal three that I just talked about in the slideshow of maximizing the diversion of solid waste. So we think, the committee thinks that the most important thing is to start that the select board, well, it's like a ship with no captain. If if a bystander said, who's in charge of your pay by bag program? I think everybody would run in different directions, not me, you know me. So I think it's really important for somebody to be at the helm and to be driving this and be responsible for it. So I mean, I think we think that the select board is that entity in the absence of the refuse disposal committee, which doesn't seem to be working. And I guess that would, you know, that would just be our select board because we're the only ones doing pay by bag. But if you have conversations with Webster and they're interested, then it would be the two select boards. The second thing is just to really start to make sure that it's only Hopkinton and Webster using their transfer station. Because in Brian's report, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I was just stunned by the numbers in that report of how we compared other towns. And I thought to myself, is there some mistake here? How can this be? Are we just a very wasteful community? And then I thought a few other things. Well, maybe other people from other towns are coming in and dumping here because it's cheaper. Nobody asks any questions. Maybe that's it. Maybe there's something wrong with our scales and our measurements. Maybe our accounting is off. Hard hard to know what it is, but if we can eliminate as much question as possible, the way to start that is to start using the stickers that are sorry, provided for in the ordinance. And I had a couple of designs for those stickers, but I think what we need to do is have stickers that are colorful, larger. The ones we have now are these little things, and they're dark, and I think they have black print on them, but we need to have something that is really easy for the staff to see, so they don't have to get out there and really peer at what's going on. Just wanted to give you an idea of what we're looking at here. It could be anything. It could be like this. You know, just a simple sticker. And the ones we have are numbered, which is kind of a hassle, and you're supposed to, you know, put down the number and the license plate of the person who has that number sticker. And that's so if you have a problem, you need to enforce it. You can call the police and tell them this is the license plate associated sticker. I don't know if we need all that. But it could be very simple. And, you know, this would be Webster, and then Hopkinton would be red or pink or purple or something. So that would be really easy to do, I think. And then the select board really needs to make a decision about who is going to be responsible for compliance. I really like to use, prefer to use the word compliance, not enforcement. Enforcement, I just don't like that word, but compliance. And when I was thinking about it, Thomas, remember your pie chart where you had the number of users of the transfer station? And say you had 100 users and 62% or 63% are customers of the haulers. So if all of those people were required to use green bags, there would be no enforcement issue there because the trash gets, mine gets picked up at 5:30 in the morning, and I don't think people would be standing out there waiting to have an argument with the hauler. It's just, you know, they put their stuff in green bags. If it wasn't in green bags, just wouldn't get picked up. And then next week, the customer would be sure to put it in green bag. So that's 62% or 62 people out of the 100 people. And then you have 11%, if I remember correctly, that take their trash to the transfer station on their own, but they are using green bags. So you're not going to have to have any difficult encounters with them because they're already in compliance. So then you have. difficult encounters with them because they're already in compliance. So then you have twenty six percent, something like that, that are people who take their own trash to the transfer station, but they're not using green bags, and of that smallish percent, maybe a quarter percent, you know, quarter of the people. You know, probably a good chunk of those people just don't do it because they don't really know they're supposed to. I mean, they, they moved here a couple of years ago, nobody really told them about, and they don't see other people doing it, so if they knew what they were supposed to do, there's a, a chunk of those people who would say, okay, I'll do that. There's another chunk that might resist it and say, well, I'll only do it if we make sure everybody does it, because it's not fair for me to do it if everybody else isn't doing it. So if we just, you know, get with the program and make sure that it's a fully fair and compliant program, then that takes away that group of people. They're like, oh, okay. And then you have another s- even smaller slice of the pie of people who, you know, might be resistant, they might even be belligerent, but you know, I, I, I wouldn't think that the transfer station staff would have to engage with them, wouldn't wouldn't be required. If there was a big problem, just that's what the stickers for. Um, you know, you, you, as the select board needs to decide how to deal with the consequences, is it a police issue or whatever, but my, my point is, I think that this enforcement that we're all pretty nervous about may be a very small slice of the pie. It's not, you know, a hundred percent of the people using the transfer station that we're going to have to interact with constantly and have trouble with. So that's, that's kind of it for the um you know, the, the low hanging food type recommendations and where we could get started. And then, I don't know if you were able to see the green, we've designed new signs for the recycling area where people understand better. So um yeah, I mean, that kind of is it, except, you know, there's Brian's report, and I did a workshop today at the N R R A conference. Andrea works for N R R A, it's great, we have another full day tomorrow, and several of us were there, but I did a workshop on full cost accounting. Um, it's a very thorough process, and I don't think it's a slam dunk, and not because it's difficult to do the actual accounting, but you'd have to gather a lot of information to get the right data in there, and we have a checklist, and we went through that. So as long as, you know, people are invested in running around and getting all that information, I don't Ryan said he was coming in June, I think, to do the accounting, and I don't think it takes him very long, once all the information is compiled, to run it through the system and show you the costs. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Andrea, I just, you know, these numbers and Brian's report are stunning and really discouraging and. Yeah, questions?
Yeah, I wonder, thank you and thank your committee for really digging into this. It's been a festering issue, uh, let's say, for quite a long time.
Uh, well, you're welcome. I'd have to say it was, it was hard to condense like six years of research and a very complex issue into a little package, uh, and I'm sorry if it went long, but you can't really put this in a nutshell. So.
Where you're looking to, let's say, change the name of the committee, you looking to change the responsibility, the role of the committee?
Of that refuse disposal committee?
Are you saying that it was a production committee or?
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, this nineteen seventy five agreement we have, yes, and it, it sets up this Hopkinton Webster refuse disposal committee, which if you look at the agreement, they're supposed to be really running, running the transfer station, setting the budget, it's, you know, doing the management.
I disagree with that, but.
Well, anyway, my thought was, you know, I don't know that that's practical. I, I'm not sure that that committee has ever really done that fully, um. But it, it just seems that, you know, the most important thing we need now is a good solid plan, and it's not just a one and done, we need to keep planning and updating. And that's going to be a big job, and it seems like getting a plan in place would be a good place to start. And there could be as many responsibilities for this new committee, I would call it advisory committee instead of refuse disposal committee, just sounds better, and you know, whatever the select board select boards choose to give this committee as an assignment, whatever, but start with a plan.
So it would be a committee of representatives of both towns. So we've got to get Webster on board.
Yeah. Ideally.
Well, no, I'd have to.
Yeah.
Um, question, one of, so one of the things I've been struggling with for a while is um initially, when the, when the green bag program was initiated, there was enforcement, and it went through various forms of issues to the point where it became problematic, and I'm curious if you have thoughts on why that was problematic and how it dropped off and, and how moving into basically doing a very similar thing would avoid the same problem.
Well, so I, and I don't think the rest of the committee know what those things were, like, nobody's ever shared with us, like, give, give us a story of like, did somebody come and deck Jolene one day, and she said, I'm not doing this anymore, or we don't really know what.
So I, I think, and.
What it, what it means when it fell off.
This is, this, like, I don't have, like, a written report to go off, this is anecdotal from a lot, talking to as many people as possible. And please, if anyone here has more history than me, definitely correct me. But I, I believe it started from a point of trying to enforce all the bags, and that became issues with people being belligerent at the transportation, and then it transitioned into a process of writing down people's plate numbers, and then uh doing fines, and that transitioned into a role of Neil chasing down fines, and that became sort of a, a tenable, and if you have a, a different.
Well, the genesis, I was on the waste reduction committee or the
Recycling.
Recycling committee and the. The um, the, the initial problem in this town was that Webster wasn't required to do it. And that really, really annoyed a lot of people. And a lot of them said, well, I guess, I got a camp over, but you're always, there were many people trying to find a way to skirt this whole issue of paying for green bag. And part of it was, it was just so freaking obvious that Webster was escaping by. And as far as, I, I, I can't say I remember anything about folks' interaction, though that may have happened. I know specifically that, that there were a lot of folks in town here who really pretended. First of all, they just couldn't go throw the trash away. You know, breaking that whole cycle of, you know, you know, and just going out to the curb and beating, and taking black bags, that's not exaggeration, we spent early mornings. I was located quite often. Um, you know, people were getting haulers. So there'd be a lot of resistance to that, and they felt it was more recycling, and it's hard for people to kind of grasp, but in fact, it wasn't enforced. It was, if you recycle, you don't have to pay so much to throw your stuff away. It's like a, come on, simple stuff. Uh, if you want to throw your recycle away, it's got to put it in a green bag and lots of. So it was never really fully embraced by a lot of folks because they thought it was a lot inequity. Inconvenience, breaking their usual habits, it's like you're saying, it's a cultural thing. And so it's it was still like six years of trying to be resented and meeting and and there are lots of people who really believe in the, in the process, but the people who don't are very wrong. Believe this, and that's why we have so many out of town haulers, because they don't want to, uh, because the haulers, I guess, didn't want to pick up and take it. So there's a lot of those that are getting picked up on the side of the roadway out of town haulers. And so, but that's okay as far as I'm concerned, because it's not going into our experience. And so I'd say, I think it's important for kind of me, help the, the both towns understand this pollination project, because it helps increase our recycling and also reducing our economy.
Also for resources, um, when you speak to this, N R R A has a lot of resources, Brian is a big resource. But D E S has what they call SWAT trainings, solid waste operator trainings, and there's a full training on pay by bag, and includes all this stuff, you know, how do you deal with enforcement, people who don't want to do it, how, you know, break it in over time, phase it in, don't just, you know, overnight say, okay, everybody green bags. Anyway, I, I looked at it last night online, and it would be really worthwhile, I think, to, to go through that training. But there are resources.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I guess the select board needs to decide, do you want to, you know, go through maybe a little rough patch of um compliance issues? Or do you want to have to tell everybody every year, it's another ninety four thousand dollar increase on our, you know, on your property taxes to dispose of your waste if you keep going? Um, pick your poison. I don't think people realize where our costs have been going. And there's no sign of it stopping. So that's, that's just a, you know, a resource that can.
Oh, um, do you, let me see, uh, there's not going to pick up, this is our closest mic, if you can come closer so we can pick you up on the Zoom. I think this will get me from there.
Catherine Mitchell. Um, I just wanted to um reiterate what Bob said. Looking back, I don't recall anything other than sort of a very vocal minority, I think it was generally pretty good compliance. There may have been some people who caused trouble. I think over time, as the administration of the transfer station changed, um, things became a little more lax. We were um all given stickers, and they, they did check the stickers, and if you lived in Hopkinton, um, you had to have a green bag. Aside from the pay as you throw program and bags, um, I would like to point out the importance of having stickers for both towns. Um, I knew somebody, he no longer lives here, but he liked to um go to the transfer station, find things that were usable, fix them up, um, computers and otherwise, other things, and turn around and sell them, and he said he knew of people all the time who came from Concord um, that lived closer to Hopkinton, and uh, not only probably didn't want to drive to the transfer station uh, in Concord, but you have to pay to dispose of everything there other than recyclables. Your television is not free, or construction and demolition, I believe we have a four hundred pound exemption, is that? The first four hundred pounds. Um, and some of that stuff, I don't know how much, but some of that is coming into Hopkinton, and I do think that we should have stickers, and they should be checked, um, pay by bag, bags or otherwise, but just something to consider, it's not just the bags, um. We would benefit by making sure that people from other towns aren't bringing things here because they can be dumped at no cost, whereas most towns charge for these things.
Yeah, unit-based pricing, it doesn't have to be bags, I mean, it can be stickers, any other way to get people to pay by the unit that they're disposing of. Um, and there, there could be solutions like we talked about, you know, Webster comes on certain days of the week, and Hopkinton comes on certain days of the week, so nobody's looking at Webster getting what they think are freebies, or as Brian noticed, he, he said, I said, Brian, how could we have so much waste? I, yeah, I find it hard to believe, he said, when I was there, I saw an awful lot of recyclables going into that hopper. So that, that's one thing, and then he said, you know, you have two sides of that hopper too. You could have, Webster has one side, and Hopkinton has the other. A way to sort of separate the two populations so they're not intermingled, that might make it easier. I think people use the colorful bags because it's easier for the staff to just see a, a colored bag than a sticker on some other bag, so they don't have to look this carefully, anyway. Yeah.
Do, do you have any idea that, um, about what percentage of uh waste or the problem is coming from Concord or places other than Webster or Hopkinton? Because that sounds, seems to me as though it might be low hanging fruit.
I have no idea, but well, you know, it's just, you have to wonder. I mean, are we really creating that much waste, just our few towns, or is there more coming in? I don't know, I mean, people say anecdotally, anecdotally, that they see people from they know live in other towns, they see them all the time bringing.
I, I, I hear anecdotes too, I don't know.
I like to deal in facts and data rather than anecdotes, because things get exaggerated, but um, I don't, I don't know the answer.
I know this is not green bag related, but in the realm of waste management, I saw an article, I didn't have a chance to read, but I bookmarked about Bo trying to implement composting, so has the Waste Reduction Committee talked about like waste the town? I mean, I know Work Songs doing it right now, but have you guys talked at all about the town implementing something?
Yeah, we have, and we'd love to, um, we had to get this done.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's, let's get the bags under control, but yes, I mean, as long as the, the staff needs to be on board with it, they have some questions about it, but you can see how obvious it is how much waste we could eliminate right off the bat, just by regirding our food scraps. And there are, there are grants out there now to help towns set up composting, and we would use, I would propose that we would use the New London model because that's worked really well, and Bo is using that model to start theirs, and we already did a pilot project here where we got an idea. Ken, you were one of our pilots, or passengers or whatever, um, and we got an idea, you know, I think it was something like forty eight percent of people's waste ended up being food scraps on average. For household, so we know that much, we, we started that. And then, you know, if you're going to do composting, you have to talk with the staff, you might need to send them to composting school, you need to set up a spot at the transfer station where it can be done, you need to figure out whether you want compost on site, or whether you want to have somebody else come and pick it up and take it, and you know, that's the easiest way, you can just have dumpsters or whatever, and people bring their food scraps, and then somebody comes and takes them off site. You, you pay them for that, you pay less for that than you paid to put the stuff on the landfill. Yeah, I mean, we would love to get going with composting, but.
The whole, the whole issue of food waste is kind of simmering, um, huge source of that main gas and all that stuff. Also, we waste our resource by growing food and then throwing it away, but the thing about um, if we do composting at the transfer station, that'll be fine for the people that already come to the transfer station and already into the recycling thing and all that. I don't know, I, I would think probably three quarters of the families in this town use out of, out of town haulers. They're not going to the transfer station. So if you wanted to um really try to establish a good composting thing, it'd be like, honestly, if you had a couple of, couple, three dumpster drop offs. Uh, because otherwise, it's only the people that are using the transfer station who have access to it, unless it really makes their minds to do it. But if you had, and, and this would just be an ethical thing, or getting other people to do it, because obviously if they're having a hauler, it's probably a good way, but you know, sometimes if you give them a little distance, it's like, all right, it's probably maybe come antiquating that, how valuable. And they can get three good composts, you know, for the town, um, so this is exciting. That we, we have to make it more available.
And we can promote more home composting too, and we can get those discounted composters from N R R A. We have a composters sale, there are ways we could go about it, I don't think it all has to be in one place. Catherine, she's way out on Boundary Road, she's probably not going to drive to Works on Farm, the bucket of food scraps, but maybe there's a closer, you know, satellite area where she could drop hers off, and then the guy comes and picks up from all the sites in town, but yeah, what to do.
Since we have a member of the schools, uh, school board here, could you talk about what the schools do for uh composting of food scraps?
Do you want me to pop that?
Do you mind so we can pick you up on the mic? Thank you Andrea, I think that'll pick you up, yeah.
Um, so the schools are, the, the, it's really student run, um. Composting, like the, the students are really interested in it. And so it started at Main Street School and I believe this, they're trying to expand it to all three schools. Um, I believe they're doing onsite composting. That might be a lot. They might have someone come and pick up their composting. Uh, I know they're very much into it. It is not under the school board. Like, not something that I run, so I don't have to know everything about it, but I do know that. Um, increasing composting and reduction of food waste, increasing recycling. Um, and then increasing the use of recycles like silverware is something that the board has been supporting. Um, has been growing at, at the school district. So, does that answer?
Oh, yeah, I was concerned, I'm wa- wondering, uh, are most students. Very much in favor of all of these environmental steps or the most not cares?
Yeah, so they tend um to be really for it. So we found that really this is student led and not just the high school level. It really is at our two elementary schools as well. Um, you know, kids love the, they have, we have a take and leave at table and all of the. Um, cafeteria. So if you don't, you have something that is not open that you don't want to eat or a piece of fruit, you can leave it at the table. If you are still hungry or you really like Cheetos and there's like Cheetos or I signed up five bowls of soup one day. You know, you can go and take it from the table. Um, so it's just other ways of reducing your food waste. And I think it's really. Um, among our students and sort of the culture of our, our schools right now is one that. Resource reduction, uh, or waste reduction and composting and using our resources wisely is. Just sort of a way of life. It's not, um, it's not something to be against because it's just something that's done, so.
So we were at the town level wanting to do something, uh, uh, stickers or whatever. By letting the schools know about it, so we're percolating up to the parents, would that be a? A good, efficient way to get the word out?
So, um, back in the day when they were just starting to make uh seat belts, something that they wanted people to wear. The way that they did it is that they actually went to the schools and they taught kids about the importance of wearing seat belts. And then they went home to their parents and educated them on the importance of wearing seat belts. And now I think the majority of us wear seat belts because you don't want your six year old telling you that you were going to die if you don't wear your seat belt. And I think that the same, um, less, you know, you're not gonna die if you don't compost your food. But I do think that the pressure from kids can be, you know, a, a real positive. Shit, it's like miniature pure Friday. So, yeah, yeah. Yeah, since I'm up here, can I say a couple more things? Now you have me. Um, I, on the composting front, the regulations changed in the last year. To make composting easier for municipalities. Um, in the past, you weren't allowed to compost meat or dairy. And that is now something that you can do. And so there's a lot more education going out on how municipalities can set up. Um, composting on site. Um, you know, I am speaking today as a resident of Hopkinton. And not on behalf of any organization, um, but there are resources available to help get that kind of thing set up. Um, I was also gonna say for any of our um pay by bag consider, well, two things. One, I think that we're faced with a really unique opportunity to partner with Webster. I think that the information that you guys were given showed the economic impact of not reducing our waste. Um, and that's something that is paid both by Hopkinton and by Webster. Um, and I know that while there are environmental benefits. It's oftentimes money talks and being able to show the financial um impact of waste production can be really helpful. And I, I know Webster is smaller than Hopkinton, but they're still paying twenty five percent of the total tonnage that we are disposing of. Um, and I'm sure like anyone, they would be happy to also see, you know, the amount that they have to raise by taxes go down. With the reduction um of waste. So it might just be another way of trying to partner with them. I know we talked a lot about doing things parallel with Webster, um, but I wonder if there's an opportunity to join with them. Um, to work together since it is, Hopkinton and Webster are really unique in New Hampshire. Um, you don't find other. Shared transfer stations that are like this. Um, you know, oftentimes the post town is the one that kind of. Lays the ground rules for everyone, um, and that's not the case for us. Uh, I also would say when considering, this is sort of separate, your pay by bag. Um, when discussing and landing on a cost for those, like what you guys are gonna charge for those. Really getting a clear understanding of what that money is going to cover. So is the money that you are raising from your pay by bags only covering landfill tipping? Is it covering hauling? Um, is it covering labor costs? Um, I think having a better understanding of what you're expecting to cover financially. With that money, um, will be really helpful in finding a good target. So those are all my things.
Thank you, very helpful. Appreciate your thoughts. Doesn't anyone else want to talk about? These issues? And by the way, thank you Bonnie, that was an excellent presentation. Well done. Yes, thank you to the committee.
I have a co-chair now.
Oh, wonderful, okay. Um, Cara, do you mind? I think we have people on to see if anyone has their hand up. Anyone else on this topic?
I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed by the work that you guys did, so thank you for doing that. Um, I am struck by how significant the food weight is to the overall amount of. Weight we're paying for. Um, and, you know, I, I hope that. I hope that we can tackle the composting part of it as, as part of our. Sort of our, our game plan to make this better, um, because that's, that's a pretty significant percentage. I mean, the, the. Bonnie, I think you said it, the amount of trash that we're throwing away is so much greater than the other communities. It's really, really. It, yeah, it, yeah, that, that number jumped out at me as well and I, I wish I had an explanation for it, because, yeah, really kind of alarming.
Well, most of those other communities are pay by bags, right? Or most of the ones on the list? And is it in varying? And most of the studies show that pay by bag decreases transfer weight by like fifty percent? Yeah. I mean, at the very least, it shows the effectiveness of a pay by bag.
Yeah, and we don't know with those other towns what they do with food waste. It's separated out before.
I would say that you do not have any, with accurate, uh, information on just about. How much waste we use as a town, if so much goes out of town on, on cap and all we know is what's happening. Those are our, our transfer stations, of which we have a certain amount of information because we have. Number of green bags sold every year. So then you have to kind of try to figure out what the rest of the, the tonnage coming into our. Transfer station and it could be theoretically just western, but there's other people that are coming in. Or just we have people from towns which are ignoring the green bag. Um, it's, it's a hard thing to quantify, but we, we do have, like I said, if you drive around town on pickup day. See a lot of black bags that are by, by under. And that's not being counted.
Or wasn't it on, on, at some point we were gonna reach back out to Webster?
Yeah, I was just making a little list to follow up with, um, with Neil, because he had talked to, I think. I think their county administrator or their select board, but I think we need to maybe engage like hopefully board to board.
I think, I think that's, um, would be useful.
So that's top of the list. And also, we've got the NRA engaged in this cost accounting, hopefully. I think then talking about like some things we can do, like I think the, the stickers showing what town you're from is something we should.
Seems like it's fairly easy.
Yeah.
If anything, seriously.
Yeah.
Can we make Webster use stickers?
Hmm, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we.
I think we can, I think we can require that only Hopkinton and Webster people use it. I don't know if we can require Webster.
Might be how our attorney interprets the agreement. If we're in charge of running the station in effect. So if that's the only way we could think to make sure it's only the locals that take advantage of.
And maybe there's, I like the idea of engaging the youth on this and creating cultural norms. I think that there's more to talk about there potentially, both with green bags and waste reduction and maybe composting, um. So that's something for us to think about.
I know all three schools are hosting trash on the lawn days.
Oh.
Uh, Harold Mark School's already done it and I gave the kids that you can do it every year if they would like.
What did you call it?
It's called Trash on the Lawn Day.
Did they throw it on the?
So basically the state prepares for the day and then everyone puts on gloves, they put out the trash. And you see, you know, what is food waste, what is um actual trash, what is recyclable? And then the kids can brainstorm. It's a real visual of your waste and then they can brainstorm ways to reduce it.
Anything else on this topic for now?
I just wanted to offer that, you know, our role as a community is to research and educate, so give us assignments. There are more things that we did not want.
Thank you.
I, I think the, the general signage, uh, you know, if it, if it's clearer, more informational.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought Neil had indicated maybe a year ago that there were separate funds that would be available for it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
Before we leave this topic, I mean, I, I would like to know more about the options for composting. Either transporting it off site from the transfer station or doing the actual composting at the, our transfer station. And I don't know if we want to assign that now or wait until we get the full cost accounting and sort of. Take another big picture look, but. I, I.
You guys had existing info on um composting, maybe you can send what you have to us for now. That would be helpful. Is that what you mean by assigning or?
Well, yeah, I mean, for suggestions specific to composting, yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I'm, that's just me talking. I don't know if others.
Yeah, I think, no, I think that it is because we still, obviously we have to figure out these other issues, but I don't see a reason why we couldn't also try to. Keep moving the ball on composting. All right. Well, thank you, much appreciated and more to come, obviously. Um, all right, so those are our public appointments. Um, so next we have old business and the naming criteria policy. I think Neil sent us a, um, an amended policy. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, your help.
I, I have a red line version of policy. I think this is the only one. I looked at it. So.
Thank you.
Well, no, it's a, a, a copy for signature, but there are not many changes.
Okay.
Oh, you, these are additional red lines you added?
No, this is, this is, Neil did that based on our last discussion and that's a hard copy version of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is it.
Okay. Would you like to finish?
Yes. I did get one question about it, which was, um, is there an issue with people donating items but not understanding the ownership? Uh, like basically people having an issue if the town moves something later on, thinking that they have ownership of the items, but. I don't know. I'm not sure how much of an issue it really is.
Well, this is just for, for name.
No, it says, it, I thought so too, but it does say, um, items as well, placement of items.
Name and for accepting memorial items, yeah. So.
I, 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 I don't think it's really an issue, I just want to bring up a fact to someone, but.
We say the memorials.
Yeah, so, um.
Whether you accept.
Go under section five, number two.
Looks like.
So.
Section four limits though to assets under the town ownership controlled by the select board.
Wait, where are you?
Section four.
There's like two sections. Section six sub four or? Section four definitions?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I don't think it's a real, I think it's fine. I don't, I don't, I don't find confusion then.
Okay.
Yeah, and then six sub two donations and memorial items. So to me, that reads as like. Yeah, if something's donated, it comes under the town's control. Okay. Okay, are we, uh?
So will we approve the, uh, uh, town facility naming dedication memorial policy number forty three? Uh, as revised.
Oh, second.
Jeffrey, are you still on the phone?
He said he had to drop off.
Oh, wow, hey. Perseverance, all right, then we'll do a roll call vote. Steven?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Thomas?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Beautiful, thank you.
I will be dropping off in seven minutes.
Okay, I don't think, and I don't think we have any new business. Do we have any new business?
No.
I was just gonna, you know, Neil had provided to us the, uh, the financials through the end of April. Um, and, you know, I looked at them and, uh, uh, nothing jumped out at me as, uh. Being a problem, uh, as usual with revenues, there's some timing issues, mainly the state. Doesn't pay us a lot till the end of the year. Expenses look fine, uh. Debt service were ahead, but that's because the way things are scheduled, um, and a couple of other things, uh. Uh, this timing, we have to pay for the year in advance. Some small questions, but overall, like, everything seemed to be going well.
Great.
Did I have one other?
Mm-hmm.
Um, at an EDC meeting, a concern came up about. Uh, the crosswalks in Kentucky near the gazebo and how they just got worn down. And I asked Neil about that and he said that DPW was aware of it and they're planning to repaint them pretty soon.
Oh, good.
Um.
So we can do that even though it's a.
Uh, I did not ask about the authority, but I think we've done it previously, so I think we're doing it again.
It seems like it would be kind of crazy if DOT was like, no, you cannot refresh your.
Yeah. I know that, I mean, just as an example, like when, when there are sidewalks constructed on state roads in municipalities. It's usually, the town pays for the sidewalks and then has to maintain them afterward. And so I think by extension, we feel like we can, we can repaint the crosswalks.
Do you have any idea when, uh, uh, the gazebo park, Riverside Park area is gonna be repaid, uh, paved?
I do not. Um, I think Neil would probably have that information, but I do not, yeah.
Does anyone who's online with us wish to speak? Alrighty, so, and we have no one from the public present with us anymore, so. I mean, we don't have a non-public. Jeff, do you have something for other?
I do not.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that brings us to the end of our meeting.
Okay, second. Okay, second. But Jeff, second.
All right, Steven?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Thomas?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
All right, well, stay safe out there in the Dakotas.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks. Thank you, Kara, for helping us navigate.
That's.
Are we no longer recording?
I think we are still recording. Yeah.
It's gotta do its thing, though, right? Hit off. It is recording, stop recording. Share with up and great.